7:30, this is the City of Brainerd City Council Meeting. It's Monday, June 2nd. It's close enough to 7:30, and I call the meeting to order. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great honor of our citizens, one nation under God, in the universal with liberty and justice for all.
Micah.
All right, item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, well, P and F is on the ball.
We are on the ball today.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries item five. The consent calendar, all matters listed are considered routine by the council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
The consent calendar, Stingline?
Second.
Oh, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson. Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Next up is the Honorable Mayor Bedeau for the Community Member of the Month.
Well, well, well. It is that time, of course, when we get to recognize individuals in our community who have stepped up. I'm glad that we're doing this on a night when we have so many people in the audience because this is a fun one for me. This is a group that I've worked with on my day job side of things on a heavy level, we'll call it, a heavy level. And this is one of those projects that a couple people, literally two moms, as I like to say, two moms, saw something in the community that they wanted to see happen. And they set to work in trying to make it happen. I'm talking about the Splash Pad. We've talked about Splash Pad many, many times. We've had ribbon cuttings, we've had opening ceremonies, we've had all sorts of things. But this, to me, is an opportunity for us as a city to thank the individuals behind it and to do so officially. This is the very official moment. The Splash Pad was something that both Emily and Meta saw as something they wanted to see in the community. And then you set to work in getting it done. And then you realize that sometimes that can be a long journey and sometimes it can be a frustrating journey. And it was fun to work with you guys. It was fun to be able to see behind the scenes and have the conversations and talk about, you know, the hurdles and the struggles and where do we go next and what do we do and how do we continue to move forward when things sometimes feel like you're up against the wall? And for me, it was so satisfying watching you guys take those last struggles at the end and get to the point where we are today, which is kids playing in water. And it is exciting. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to get to the Splash Pad yet, but Memorial Park means a lot to me. I've said that a lot of times. I grew up in northeast Brainerd. Memorial Park is where we hung out. We rode our bikes down there. At that time, there was a little crick over there. You could get in there with the tadpoles and whatnot, explore back in the woods. But we spent a lot of time there as kids. And it's a park that oftentimes is underutilized, and it's great to see a project that is bringing kids to that park. And I have driven by there many, many times in the last month now, and it is always packed. And I'm sure that will continue to be the case on these super hot days. But I think that what we are able to see is a couple citizens, a couple community members, take a project that they're really interested in seeing happen and then actually do the work to get it done. And so it is my honor as the mayor to present to both Emily Rolfson and Meta Madich the Community Member of the Month. And I'm going to read what it says here, "For your dedication to the children of the City of Brainerd through your leadership in the Splash Pad project."
Yeah, because we need a photo app.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I just want to say thank you first and foremost for helping make this happen. Without that final push from City Council, it would have never become a reality. And I just want to say that like 27 years ago, Bonnie was my, I'm going to cheer up here, my high school marketing teacher. And it was during a time when, you know, you're high school, you're rebellious. And we wanted to have a youth center at that time. And we came up with a plan, we had thousands of petitions, and we really went with it because we're just kids, right? One thing she told me is if you ever have a goal and if you ever have a plan, never ever give up. So to stand here today and to see her bench as a passing is so important to me and it's such an accomplishment. And this whole project has really humbled me from my high school years to today. So I just want to thank you guys for giving us that one last push. That was really important. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is item seven, the Council Committee Report. Seven A is Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have six items on the agenda, the first of which is to consider a cable channel agreement with CLC. And the motion is to enter into agreement with Central Lakes College to host and operate a cable channel. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Sean's putting a lot of work on this, and we're right here. We're at the end. We have the agreement. We forget this sign, get it over to them, we could be on cable in our first meeting in July, right, Sean? So this is an exciting time for all of those CTC subscribers. Charter subscribers or Spectrum subscribers are going to need to wait for that company to get the proper equipment in place.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is consider a shared services agreement with Crow Wing County. And the motion is to authorize a signature on the agreement amendment for the 2023 Shared Maintenance Service Agreement. It is so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
As you saw in the packet, they gave us a breakdown of where they spend the time, what type of maintenance they delivered to us last year. We used about 1,351 hours of the 1,500 contracted. So we're pretty close there. And this year, they did increase their fee by a few thousand dollars after having been flat for two years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is to consider declaring Lakes Area Music Festival annual event a community festival. And the motion is to consider the annual Lakes Area Music Festival events that run for 24 days as a community festival, thereby allowing the Lakes Area Music Festival to hold more than one temporary liquor license within a 30-day period, all of this contingent upon the school district finally approved, final approval if they allow alcohol in the school or not. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So the school district, I don't know if you've seen, they're working on possibly allowing certain events to have alcohol in certain parts of their schools. And they're not done with it yet. But if they do finalize that and allow Performing Arts Center, line at the Performing Arts Center, the Lakes Area Music Festival would like to serve that. They need to be a community festival to be able to serve at all of their events.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to consider request for ARPA funds for the EDA. And the motion is to authorize the allocation of $80,000 in ARPA funds to the EDA to be used as matching grant funds to eligible organizations or businesses for the Deed Main Street Revitalization Program. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Chairman Johnson.
So we did deed-funded the Initiative Foundation, who has a 30%, 70% grant match in the downtown corridor. We're going to pull these funds out of the ARPA funds to have a secondary grant program to kind of be more than a 30% match. We can put in some local funds with the state funds and hopefully get some good projects off the ground downtown Brainerd.
Thank you. Any further discussion? ARPA funds, if they don't know, is American, go ahead.
American Recovery Program.
Rescue.
Federal.
Rescue, they rescued us, yes. Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you.
Next one is discussion on use of ARPA funds for public works projects. And the motion is to direct staff to come back to the council with a list of all possible projects we could do in the city with the ARPA funds. And we'll discuss it as a council, determine what our priorities are. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
The agenda request asks for two specific projects, but these two specific projects were also talked about at our February workshop where the direction at the end of the workshop was let's look at this complete picture and prioritize from there. So we're going to try and do that. And I think staff is confident they can get us a list by either the workshop or our first meeting in July.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. The final item on the agenda is an update for request for funds to be returned to the city from Lakes Area Media Collaborative. And the update is, well, we sent out a new letter and we included more of their board members on it, so maybe we'll hear back.
Spiced it.
We added some serious spice to it. I liked it. We haven't heard anything yet, though.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Anything else?
End of report.
Thank you. Next up is Safety and Public Works Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Public Works, we had four items on the agenda tonight. The first two had to do with each other, same project, two different agreements. So the first one was an agreement amendment for Improvement 19-02, Kayauna Lakes State Trail Road and Parking Lot Improvements. A motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached agreement amendment for the subcut work for Improvement 19-02 NP Center Site Improvements and authorizing payment to Mr. Higgins in the amount of $14,467.50 for the work completed. And I so move.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Erickson.
Thank you. Second by Erickson. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
So this was one of those unforeseen things that happens on these projects. Basically, the soil, as you get closer to the wetlands and out into the Superfund site, was not tested. But now we're finding that there's some unsuitable soil for a trail, and there's willows growing underneath it that would eventually pop through the trail. So instead of risking our trail falling apart in that segment, what we're going to do, what we've already done, I understand, is dig out the bad soil and bring in sand and weed block as well after we get the willows out. I think this work is already done, correct, Paul? He started on it, not done. Started on it, okay. So this section, this item, is just having to do with the work that Mr. Higgins has done. It wasn't in our original agreement, but we're just adding it to the agreement. So he's paid for what he has done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second item was a change order for the actual improvement, 19-02, Kayauna Lakes State Trail NP Center Segment. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the change order one as presented. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
So Knife River has been a big part of the paving and supplying different materials that we need for this project. The total change order amount for the material that they're bringing in to fill under the trail, it was $45,640, and that's what this change order is representing. This part of this change order is actually reimbursable by the DNR funds, which we do still have more than that available.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of change order number one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please proceed.
Thank you. Third item was a cooperative construction agreement with the state of Minnesota for Highway 25 Bridge Project SP 1811-35 TH 25-18. Motion coming out of committee was just to adopt the attached resolution, which enters into the agreement with MINDOT for the bridge replacement project. And I so move.
Second, Erickson.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I can just explain this. This is a project that we handed over some funds to MINDOT to help design this section of the trail from where it crosses by 10th Street all the way over the train tracks at the new bridge and into 28th Street. So this is just a maintenance agreement, but this is basically, MINDOT has all the design work done, as far as we know. It won't be done until next year, this section. But this just says that the city will maintain the trail at whatever level.
Any questions or discussions? I have a question, Mr. Chair, and maybe it's for Mr. Sandy. Well, this, as you're going from the NP Center and you go east through the swamp into the bridge, will you eventually end up on the north side of 25? 25 kind of curves east-west as it comes into town. So you're ready to connect, to head east once you get across 210 and go out by the airport and connect to Riverton. Will you be on the correct side of the road to make that happen?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Or will we have a whole nother project that require hot air balloons to get you across 25?
So we've been having a bunch of conversations with MINDOT about their 2026 reconstruction of Highway 210. And so the inevitable goal is to get pedestrians from the south side of 25 to the north side of 210 where that existing trail takes place.
That's exactly my question, is if that's going to be able to happen without?
That'll happen during the 2026 construction project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Resolution?
Oh, yeah, resolution. Thank you very much.
Eric.
Yes, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Yeah, the fourth and final item from SPW is also a resolution authorizing an agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transportation services in the year 2023. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend adopting the attached resolution as proposed to allow proper signatures on the grant agreement with the state of Minnesota. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
Yeah, we had Mr. Stone in here kind of answer some questions about how things are going. It sounds like ridership is up and climbing back towards where it was pre-COVID. This agreement is no different than what we've had this year. The state covers the vast majority of expenses, leaving us with operational costs of 5% and 10% of capital costs. And we were assured that the ridership where it is right now is actually paying for that loss, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted, Mr. Chair. Anything else?
End of report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to an item eight unfinished business. Item 8A is the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1532. This is an ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter. We have a little conflict here in that set. On the agenda I printed off, it shows the reading first, then the hearing. On the one in the computer, it shows the other way around. So, Mr. Attorney, do you have a preference as to which one we do first?
It doesn't matter.
All right, then we'll start with the public hearing, okay? So if you are online and wish to speak on this, you need to hit star three, and that will let us know that you're interested in speaking. And then when it's your turn, we'll call you and star six will unmute you. If you're in the audience, you need to just come forward. You'll need to state your name and your home address. And then we're going to try and keep this to, you know, a minute or two. I think we'll get the idea fairly soon. Deanne, can this group do, the seniors center get their point across in 20 minutes, you think?
I think so.
All right. And do you want to go first?
Mr. President?
Yes.
That's the next item on the agenda.
Oh.
This is of all the changes except.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to get to this public hearing on the stuff, on the changes. The first part is all the changes but the charter levies, okay? My apologies. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I believe there are some changes to the charter levies in the first one as well.
In the first one as well, okay? Thank you. So there are, the first one is Ordinance 1532. And we're going to hold the public hearing on 1532. And this is the one that has all kinds of stuff. Chapter one, name, boundaries, powers, and divisions, that sort of stuff. A lot of stuff, but it's not the levies for the senior center that are, yes, Deanne. You have to come up to the microphone. But since I screwed this up, I'll let you come up and get a clarification. Come on, it's okay.
It does include, it includes the funding being made.
Please address, that's at the microphone.
Yeah, you have to come up to the microphone. I'm sorry.
Deanne Berry, 18610 Smith Road, Brainerd, Minnesota. I am Director of the Center, 803 Kingwood Street. Amongst the pages of documentation, it is a change splitting the funding to multiple organizations instead of to one. So it is a change.
Yep, it is a change, and you'll get to speak on this one too if you choose.
All right.
Okay? So we're going to start with the public hearing on that one. So you want to stay, you can. So we're going to open the public hearing on 1532. Sorry to screw you up. It's your record.
So do I have to do my name and all that again?
No, you just did. You're.
All right. So I would like to do some explanation on the article, Nonprofit Funding in Jeopardy that was published on Sunday, June 12. The media did not get anything construed. It was just information from city council meeting, charter meeting, that I would like to address for a little bit. Addition of senior services, senior programming was added in 1982. It was voted on. It was a referendum, and it became part of the charter in 1983. It was passed by a vote of the citizens of Brainerd. It was put on a ballot. It wasn't temporary funding. Nowhere was temporary funding, startup funding, part of the wording. It was a referendum. It was meant to be permanent funding. It was meant to be ongoing funding to sustain senior programming within the City of Brainerd and the area. The center, part of the article talks about, you know, maybe we can't fundraise, but we certainly do. 65% to 70% of our budget is fundraising. Donuts, you're probably familiar with. Plants, if you're a gardener, you may be come to our plant sale, ramming sale, barbecue dinner, bingo events. Quote bingo as this Sunday. Come and join us. Some of our events, we have fun while we are fundraising. Another thing in the article was mentioned that LGA funding could be reduced if the city's charter states that we're donating to nonprofits. That is not true. As per Representative from Carrie Ru's office, LGA funding is based on housing units built pre-1940, from 1940 to 1970, household size, number of businesses, employees within the City of Brainerd, peak population decline, sparsity adjustments. It has nothing to do with funding to nonprofits. There's been some questions that we overbudget with our facility. We host 54 activities, Monday through Friday. Five to six happen off-site. Where would you suggest that we go that we can afford? Our building is paid for. We've paid for our building. Expenses, yes, utilities are expensive, but we've done some serious renovations to our building as well. Commercial air conditioners on the ends of second, third, and fourth. If you have an office in the building, that isn't enough when it's 100 degrees, as Tiffany can attest to. But we've replaced all the windows in all four floors in the main level, entrances, doors, main level flooring, painted the walls, the hallways, redone a couple roofs. We've done this not only with grant dollars, but with commitments from our own members as well. And yes, membership is only $20 an annual fee. But when you think about some of our members living on social security, their income is $2,000 a month. Out of that comes a health supplement. Average is about $270. Prescription drug plan, it's another 18.
Ooh. Dun, dun, dun. We keep moving?
Um, can we? We don't have.
We have no power.
We are in a severe thunderstorm warning.
Nicely done, Deanne. Thank you.
I'm not done.
Keep up what the center's doing, the good work. See if you can wrap her up in a couple of minutes.
Yep, it'll be just a minute. So the senior now makes $1,712, plus they have food, they have travel, they have gas, and they have housing. So, you know, I don't think too many of us can live on $2,000 a month. Based on the voters of 1982, the residents of Brainerd from that date and the residents that you represent today as well, I'm hoping that you do not change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1536.91] Nope, can't clap, no, 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 you gotta be respectful. There are going to be people who may say something you don't agree with, and you can't ruin the assum, and you can't clap when you do like it. You can do that after the meeting, at, you know. Joe, if we, Attorney Langill, if we lose power, can we continue or not? Okay, then we're going to take a break and hope the power comes back on. There we go.
Ask and you shall receive. How long does it take to reboot the recording equipment, though?
Sean, let us know when we're ready.
Claims to be recorded at the moment.
Thank you very much. So we're in the public hearing on the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1532. If you, and I wanted Deanne to go first, but anybody else can get up and speak. There's our people here, there might be community action people here. But we need to get you up and in the lines on either side so we can get going, so we can try and get this done in 20 minutes or so. So if nobody else would like to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. I thought so. Come on up, get in lines on either side. Come up to the microphone, state your name and a home address. Tell us what you think about Proposed Ordinance 1532. I'm going to presume that nobody else is in line, that nobody else wants to speak. Okay, come on.
Well, okay then.
Well, they may be saving it for the other ordinance, who knows?
Well, yeah.
All right, state your name and address.
I am Darlene Stone. I live on Buffalo Hills, Spur Drive. Oh, 2219.
Thank you.
Anything else you need to know?
Just those two things, you're doing great, but we want to keep it to a couple of minutes.
Okay, okay, here we go, I get it. My husband was on council 30 years, City of Vandover, and fire chief, I get it, you want to get out of here, so do I, I'm scared. I am here basically because I, hey, I spoke to Dave Bado. I called you, and you were so kind and gave me like 20 minutes of his time, which he didn't have to. I thank you. I'm here because I am so proud of Deanne and what she's done through the years. I have an elder with me that was here when they formed the center here in Brainerd, who is a very much respected lady. We just want you to realize, this growing older, these golden years, so-called golden years, yeah, guys, they're not so golden. And it's very important as an elder that these people have a place to go. We have men who come and have a hot meal, maybe their wife has passed, who knows? They are there to have friendship, share memories, laughter. And I really believe they should be much more respected than what I feel is being happening in the world in general. They've been taxpayers, they've been voters, they voted, you know, that's who we were and are. And it saddens me greatly that they would even consider a dollar amount on what Deanne is able to offer these people. Please consider that. Someday, like I say, with the grace of God, you'll wake up and, oh my God, you're old. It's not a fun thing, just say it.
Thanks for that good news. All right. Please, come up. Don't wait to get up to the microphone. Please stand up as Mayor Bado is showing you, so we can move through this as quickly as efficiently as possible. Your name and address.
My name is Suzanne Hanson. My address is 2302 Kermit Lane, Brainerd, Minnesota, 560, 56401. I can't believe I'm doing this, and I don't have a whole lot to say, but I don't think any of yous are old enough to vote for this. And I think you should tour the center before you're allowed to vote. And that's all I want to say.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, you see, you inspired them.
Karen Reiter, 2131 Grayden Avenue. My only question is, I do not understand when it has been voted on years ago through a referendum, and you few people can say, we're going to change it. Why didn't it go before a, on a voting system through the whole city?
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Mayor Bado, come on up. I presume you want to speak for Community Action.
I do. Dave Bado, 602 North Ninth Street, Executive Director of Brainerd Community Action. My board asked me to speak on behalf of our organization, just simply to thank you for the opportunity to continue working with you, and to just take a few seconds to say how much we appreciate the opportunity and appreciate the chance for us to continue for these next five years. Whether or not that continues beyond that, we understand that you guys have things that you need to work with in terms of being fiscally responsible. However, we do believe that we have put forth a solid proposal. We do believe that that proposal is something that can be executed, and we look forward to continued dialogue over the next handful of years as to what that means and where we end up over that timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else in line, we will close the public hearing at 8:00. The next item up is to hold and possibly dispense with the final reading of Ordinance 1532. So for this to pass, the final reading, it just needs to be a majority, but the unanimous part is so we don't have to read the ordinance, unless you want the ordinance read. So we are looking for a motion to hold and dispense with the final reading of 1532.
So move Johnson.
Motion by Johnson is our second.
Second, Erickson.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes?
Just for clarification, it seems like we're, maybe the room is a little confused about what the first one is compared to the second one, because we have two ordinances to pass. Do we have clarification on that before we vote?
Administrator Bergman believes she can hit the highlights.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. The ordinance 1532 is in your packet, and just the highlights of it in Chapter One. Chapter One outlines all of the boundaries of each ward, first are wards one through four. And the recommendation from the Charter Commission is that instead of listing out each one of the wards, we say that the city shall be divided into four wards in accordance with state law. These boundaries that are listed out were actually not changed after the census in 2010. And so to keep it easier, the city shall be divided into four wards in accordance with state law, would still meet the intent of the charter. So that was one of the recommendations by the Charter Commission. The second recommendation in this ordinance is in Chapter Two, and that is officers and elections. Currently, the charter says that in the, at the first...
A vacuum or a siren?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. A vacuum. The Chapter Two Officers and Election states that the election of a president and a vice president shall occur immediately after the election, which is in November, but our seating council doesn't take office or the oath of office until January. So the recommended change to this section is to say at the first meeting in January of the city council after the regular city election. It shall proceed to elect by ballot from its members a president and vice president. The next one in Chapter Two is adding 36, and I may defer to Connie here. If you want to explain, Connie, some of the changes to the Streets chapter and the financing in regards to it.
Excuse me, thank you, Council President, members of the city council. So the biggest thing was the Permanent Improvement Fund. It made reference to a lot of the items that have already been removed from the charter. So that was the biggest section under number two. The Streets chapter, the only thing that was left was, after we went through the Streets chapter, was the item on the special assessments, and therefore we added that back into Chapter Number Two, saying that they shall... I'm not seeing it right now, it's saying, or Chapter One, excuse me, saying that the city council shall have the power to make assessments. And then we did, did you may have deferred assessments based on certain criteria established by resolution or ordinance? And then that renumbered the rest of Chapter One. And chapter, the Streets chapter was completely eliminated since most of it's already in state statute, or...
I guess I wasn't really prepared.
The Street chapter was no longer needed once we moved the special assessments to Chapter One.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please, continue.
Then, Chapter Three, Finances, those numbers three through five are actually all listed in Ordinance 1533, so those are not addressed in Ordinance 1532.
Mr. President?
Did that give you, you have the floor?
That was the point of clarification that I wanted to make. So this, this 1532 has nothing to do with the half mil levies that we're discussing just now. Okay?
Okay. Anything else, Mr. O'Day?
Nope.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. This is on the thir, the final reading for Proposed Ordinance 1533.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. I'm jumping ahead, I keep wanting to get ahead. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. We've held the public hearing. Next up is to approve or adopt Ordinance 1532. Is there a motion?
I'll move Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, second by Erickson. Any discussion again?
O'Day.
What's that?
Second was not me, it was O'Day.
It was O'Day, thank you. Motion by Johnson, second by O'Day. Tiffany Stingline?
Mr. President, I think we've got a lot in here that frankly I really like. I love the language simplifying the way we have our wards divided in our charter, but I think there are just too many things happening in one ordinance change, and I would like to see it broken up. I also am cognizant of what's happening out there and do not want to move to divide the question tonight. I am confident that the Charter Commission can bring it back to us in pieces. So I will be voting no.
Okay. And if this does not pass unanimously, then it doesn't happen. Okay? So we might as well discontinue the discussion based on that and ask Administrator Bergman to call the roll.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Stingline?
No.
Bevins?
Yes. And that motion fails. We'll go on to 1533. Let's open the public hearing at 8:07, and ask any, buddy, you got the hang of this now, to come on up and speak on behalf of 1533. That, the highlights are, Administrator Bergman, that's the one that eliminates funding after five years?
Mr. Chair? Yes, that's correct. So at the April 20th Charter Commission meeting, the commission directed staff to review that language to allow distributing funds to include one or more organizations in reference to green space arboretums, senior programs, and events in community action. In addition, to revise the language to clarify the intent of within the city limits of Brainerd and to mean within its entirety. Staff brought back a recommendation to the Charter Commission at the May 11th meeting to clarify both the intent of within the city limits of Brainerd and allowing one or more organizations to receive 1.5% of the previous year's levy. You can find that in that memo on pages seven through eight. After the discussion with the Charter Commission on May 11th, a motion was made by the Charter Commission to strike Chapter Three, Sections Three through Five in their entirety, with the further recommendation to have legal review and then to extend the Northland Arboretums Agreement to five years. The council did hold that first reading on June 6th, and so tonight would be to hold the public hearing, hold and dispense with the final reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 1533, and then take a voter, consider adopting Proposed Ordinance 1533.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, we're in the public hearing, it's 8:09. If you wish to speak on Proposed Ordinance 1533, please come up, state your name, your home address. David O.
David O., 602 North Ninth Street, Executive Director, Brainerd Community Action. Just for the public record, I want to make sure that we are on the record as saying the exact same thing as I said on the last one. If you want me to repeat it, I can, but Community Action just wants to thank you for the opportunity and hope that we can find a way to work through any questions we may have during our contract time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on up. State your name and address, and tell us what you think of this.
Kathy Tusa, 14075 Firewood Drive, Baxter. I'm one of those. I'm also president of the Board of the Center this year, and ditto on everything Deanne said before, and also on the fact that this was voted on by the public, and for half a dozen members of the Charter Commission, and you eight folks here being able to throw it out without real public input, and I mean on a ballot for people to look at. You already changed the funding a little bit, and I think that it should be voted on by more than just you. No disrespect intended. And also, in a previous meeting, I heard concerns about benefiting people outside the city of Brainerd, and the center does have members from surrounding communities, but when those folks come to town, come to the center, they don't just come to the center. They shop, they buy groceries, gas, whatever. So it's not just benefiting Brainerd. I mean, it's not just benefiting the center, it's benefiting the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else in line, whoop, come on up. Doesn't appear there's a lot of speakers, so you can take 15 minutes, because that'll end everybody's time.
Deanne Berry, 18610 Smith Road, Brainerd, Minnesota. I am Director of the Center, 803 Kingwood Street. We are very thankful for the years we have worked with the Brainerd City Council, the city of Brainerd, and the funding we have received since 1983. 1983 maybe seems like a real long time ago to some of you. To some of us, it doesn't seem like so long ago. But there are documents in existence that have real relevance today, they're a whole lot older. So I asked you to consider the relevance of our area of the charter as well. State of Minnesota Constitution was established in 1858. United States Constitution, 1778. Declaration of Independence, 1776. Old documents, some are written in calligraphy. This area of the charter was hand-packed on a typewriter, but to us, it is very relevant, and I ask you to leave it in place and to allow the funding to be to one organization. We have no problem coming in and reporting what we do with your funding. Any questions? One of my members offered a tour. Some of you have not been inside our doors. Please come in. There are lots of great things that happen, Monday through Friday, sometimes on a weekend. Come and help us. We'd love to have you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Deanne. Anybody else wish to add to what has been said? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 8:13. Next up, we are going to look for a motion for the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1533, an ordinance amending the Brainerd City Charter.
So move to Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second, Erickson.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion on the final reading? Any discussion on the final reading?
Mr. President?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I believe that we already know which way this is going to go, because we've already been told at the previous meeting. I will say that I sat in the charter meeting for this discussion. It was not my idea, it was brought up by another member, and I was on the fence about it. I have never seen an issue with the center. I never saw one at all before any of this stuff was even discussed. It was, it was a process of cleaning up the charter, and fairness was not in that section. So that was, that was a language change, that was nothing. But what happened was, when the language change was proposed, that information was misconstrued by you, Ms. Berry, and the entire organization came after the council as if we were canceling the center. And that, that didn't come around until after everything had already been set. All you guys had to do was present your contract, and there it was. And now we're at a point, because of all these things that have happened since then, where we're talking about just getting rid of this entire section of the charter. And I think it's partially because people don't want to deal with that again. Now, this isn't going to pass, I can tell you that right now. But I think what, what needs to be discussed, because this isn't going to pass, is, one, this was a referendum. I totally agree with you, 100%. I don't remember the year, was it 1982, 83? And Community Action was a referendum. So if we're going to question those, maybe moving forward, we send to the charter a question whether or not we put those back on as a referendum. As for, as for the ARB, we've already given direction on that. I don't even, I don't even know where we've gotten with, with that committee that we were supposed to form, I haven't heard. But we already have direction on that. So that's just my two cents going forward, because I know, I know which way this is going to go today. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Day. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I believe we're still on the, the reading.
Yep. Yep, still on the reading. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Now we're looking for a motion to adopt Ordinance 1533.
So move Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second, Erickson.
Second by Erickson. Now we're discussing the adoption of the ordinance. Okay? This is a charter amendment, so it must pass unanimously to be enacted. Hearing no further, oh, we were up, thank you.
Mr. President, I intend to vote no on this. I think that, first of all, we as elected officials need to put our egos behind us when we consider things like this. It is our job to interact with the public and to explain things that are happening when people are questioning or confused. It is very confusing, some of the things that we do. But more importantly, I firmly believe that government is how we as a community come together and accomplish things that we want to do. And it has been made clear to me over the last several months that these organizations and funding them, that is something that we as a community want to do. So I will be voting no.
Thank you, Tiffany. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second, it must pass unanimously. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline?
No.
No, I'm sorry, sorry. Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
No.
Stunek?
No.
Johnson?
Yep.
Pritchett?
No.
Stingline?
No again.
But Bevins?
Tiffany, how about yes? And that motion fails. So the part I was trying to get with you while we're on these charter amendments, there was a discussion of the committee on the ARB. Can you do that during your report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes.
Thank you. Perfect, we will move on to Item C, which is the call for applicants. First up is the Honorable Mayor Bado.
Holy heck, all right, call for applicants is somewhere on this sheet of paper. Here we go. The following applications are available on our website, ci.braner.mn.us backslash boards. We have the following committee seats available. Cable TV Advisor Committee, two terms expiring 2022, one term expiring 2024. Charter Commission, it sounds like we have slots available, and it sounds like we have things to talk about. things to talk about. Two slots available, one term expiring 2022 and one term expiring 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, two terms expiring 2022. We also have two terms on the EDA, one expiring 2022 and one expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as Council President, I have one term on the Planning Commission to expire 2023 and the Water Tower Fundraising Committee has one position. Item 9 is new business. Item 9A is consideration of variance from setback standards at 523 or 521 North 9th Street. Mr. Kramfick, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Sarah Hayden Shaw is requesting a reduced front yard setback from 20 feet to 12 feet for a proposed addition to the house. This request is, so essentially the addition lines up with the current front of the home. The Planning Commission determined that the variance request for the reduced setback is consistent with the historic neighborhood and voted unanimously to recommend granting the requested variance without conditions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is there a motion on this variance request?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Pritchett, second, Erickson, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item 9B is a consideration of variance from setback standards at 704 Norwood Street. Again, Mr. Kramfick, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Dave Bennett, on behalf of Youth Investment Foundation, is requesting a side yard setback reduction from 20 feet to one foot and a reduced rear yard setback from 20 feet to two feet for a proposed accessory structure. The proposed accessory structure would be a garage, 24 by 28 feet. It is needed for the storage of two vans and recreational equipment for the youth center. Through discussion from the Planning Commission, it's determined that the utilities on site posed a difficulty from situating the structure elsewhere on the site. The commission voted unanimously to recommend granting the requested variance with condition that staff approves a stormwater management plan that diverts stormwater from the neighboring south and east properties that will result from the construction of the accessory structure.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to move on the variance?
Motion to approve, Erickson.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by O'Day. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is the interim ordinance, 1534, consideration for an interim ordinance instituting a moratorium. Mr. Kramfick, something you'd like to explain this to us on?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So staff was approached by concerned citizens about the removal of single-family homes in our residential neighborhoods, essentially for the construction of parking lots and green space. So as many of you are aware, the city currently has a shortage of housing, particularly affordable housing. Removal of dwelling units for the establishment of green space or surface parking adds to that overall shortage for the city. So staff wanted to make council aware and is requesting time to study this issue with the Planning Commission. So Proposed Ordinance 1534 would impose a six-month moratorium on the conversion of dwelling units to green space or surface parking in the R1 zoning district.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to hold the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1534, an interim ordinance placing a temporary moratorium on prohibiting the conversion of dwellings to green space or surface parking in the R1 single-family residential district and also dispense with the actual reading?
So move Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1534, amending the city code, Section 515, And the zoning map. Section 515 is the zoning code. Mr. Kramfick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this comes before City Council Night as the first reading. I'd like to give kind of a brief summary of some of the revisions that we've gone through these past couple of months. I'd also like to start by thanking everyone that has been involved in the proposed zoning code update, the Planning Commission, City Council, and the mayor, our consultants Jennifer and Mike. Many city staff have been involved in this, as well as the public for all their engagement in this process. So the revisions to the proposed zoning code have been thoroughly reviewed by the Planning Commission after hearing concerns from the public and council. Changes have been made these past couple of months that certainly are a benefit to the proposed zoning code. Just to give you a brief summary of what happened, staff did send out letters informing potentially unaware property owners of zoning changes that may affect their property. Planning Commission reviewed these properties, as well as over 70 parcels, and heard from the concerned property owners before making recommendations for the zoning district for those parcels. Planning Commission also recommended extending the Main Street District one block south. As a reminder, the Main Street District does not allow for first-floor residential. The extension encompassed many one-story existing commercial buildings and did not create any non-conforming residential structures by extending the Main Street District. Also, at the June 15th Planning Commission meeting...
Can I have you, hold on, James?
Yep.
Can we have the people with the cell phones leave the room as a courtesy, please? If you've got a cellphone and you don't, I'll shut off, can I ask you to leave the room?
Sorry.
Please, it's just multiple times now. No, just step out so it doesn't ring again. Thank you, James. Go ahead, please proceed.
Sorry about the interruption.
Yep, thank you. So one last thing. At the June 15th meeting, the Planning Commission made one final recommendation of including residential uses in the PSP district, the Public Semi-Public District. The PSP district, among other things, includes colleges, hospitals, places of worship, as well as community centers that may need the potential for residential uses. So as proposed, any residential use in this district must be accessory to the primary use and obtain a conditional use permit. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed zoning code during their meeting on June 15th and recommended to accept the proposed zoning code as presented with all marked additions and corrections. Also wanted to note that if the proposed ordinance does come to council as a second reading, our consultants from SHC will be present to answer questions. Jennifer is online tonight if you do have any questions of her tonight, and City Council would hold a public hearing for that.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Hearing none. This is a motion to hold the first reading on Proposed Ordinance 1535. Is there a motion to hold that reading?
Is there an opportunity for someone to comment?
No.
So move Johnson.
Second.
There's a public hearing at the second reading.
Second.
Okay. Johnson, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Erickson?
Second.
Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to verify that we will have a public hearing at the second reading because I don't think we're legally required to.
Correct.
But I think it is helpful for the citizens to be given that opportunity.
Yes, we will have a public hearing at the second reading on the zoning.
Thank you.
All right. Good question. Any other questions on the first reading? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Next up. Where did we just go? First reading, down to the bottom, flipping over. This is the public forum section. So this is where you get to speak if you choose to anything that we have not spoken with on tonight's agenda. Time limits, we'd like to keep it within one to three minutes. So if you'd like to speak on something that we have not discussed this evening, please come forward, step up to the microphone, state your name and your home address, and we will open the public forum at 8:28 PM. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Candace Zimmerman, Director of Northland Arboretum. My at-home address is 10246 County Road 44 and address of Northland Arboretum is 14250 Conservation Drive. And I just wanted to give a update on our work group, so that is the reason I'm here tonight. I did get an agreement from Jennifer Bergman to participate in that work group, as well as from Brad at the city of Baxter, city administrator, and a respectful decline from the county administrator, Mr. Oh, Mr. Ho, Tim Ho. So progress is in the works for developing that work group, and we just need to set a date and we will be moving forward. And I welcome any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got that, Mike? I did.
Good. Anybody else who wishes to speak on anything we have not discussed tonight? Anybody? Anybody online? John?
Only Jennifer Haslam.
Does she have her hand up? Oh, well, she might. She might want to speak on something, the splash pad or something, I don't know. All right, we will close the public forum at 8:29 and move on to staff reports. Anything from the attorney's office?
No.
Anything from the planning office?
Nothing to add.
From the engineering and public works office? From the finance director office?
We're still looking for election judges. We only have about 27 judges signed up for training and we need about 50. So if we can, anybody interested in serving as an election judge, need to be over the age of 18, but we can have trainee judges. So any interest at all, please sign up. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from ITGIS?
No, nothing.
Police Department?
Nothing, Mr. President.
All right. Jennifer Haslam, anything you want to say from the hired-on staff?
She's gone.
She's gone. I get that. She's picking up sticks in my yard. And Administrator Bergman?
Just a couple of quick updates. I had the opportunity last week to attend the Flag Day Ceremony with Mayor Bedeau. Just a really nice ceremony that they held over at the county. Also attended the Here for Good Market and the Chamber did their Business After Hours, so another great event. And then also did WJJY's Community Focus. And I assume that the chair of our EDA will be giving an update on the Main Street Revitalization Program and the subcommittee. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. We'll move on to 13, the council committee reports. We'll start in the middle with PNF Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Jennifer alluded to, the EDA was asked by the Initiative Foundation to be the entity that helps decide, put together an application, decide where the Main Street Grant Relief Funds are spent. So we appointed a subcommittee made up of Bruce Buxton from River to Rail, Marie Hirsch from DDBC, Mary Divine Johnson from Brainerd Restoration, Dave Bedeau from the city of Brainerd, and Kevin Jaeger as an EDA representative. And they've met once, and we are actually going to, I think Jennifer called it a special meeting because now tonight we approved another $80,000 in additional grants to be awarded by that subcommittee, and we're really excited to be moving forward with that. And we're hoping we get the, all the applications possible. So they were awarded $4.5 million at Initiative Foundation, and they allocated about $770,000 to Brainerd. But if we get applications over and above that and other communities do not, they may pull some of that money and put it into additional projects in Brainerd. So we want to get all the businesses and all the people possible applying for those grant dollars. And then one final thing, I heard from a constituent, Paul, I never did call you back on this, I'm sorry, but I heard from a constituent at 513 Southeast 12th Street, and he seems to believe that the city did some roadwork and alleyway work this last year, and it has diverted water into his basement, and he's flooded a couple of times since that work was done. So, Mr. President, if we could get this on like the safety and public works agenda for the next meeting to address the issue?
You bet we can.
Paul, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right. SPW Chair O'Day?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Pritchett?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Stunek?
I'm good tonight.
Mr. Erickson?
Sir.
Tiffany Stingline?
No.
And I have nothing to add, so next up is, oh, Mayor Bedeau. There we go. Slowen it down.
You've got to talk for at least 20 minutes before the storm goes.
Slow it down. All right. Sticks in my yard, I'm going to complain.
I, well, one of the items we're going to talk about is Gregory Park, so we'll just go through this super fast. Brainerd Community Action has three events going on three weekends in a row that I will be involved with. The skate event happened this last Saturday. Just want to say thank you to city staff for getting all that stuff squared away. We stole a couple picnic tables from Kiwanis. I hope that those made their way back there. I don't know if I'm supposed to tell you that or not, but we stole a couple picnic tables. I hope we brought them back. Went great. Fantastic event for those guys. Big news, they received a $13,000 check. I take that back, a $10,000 and another $3,000, both from Reggie at Cloud Stamping. So that was a very successful event for them. He stopped by to see everything that was going on, so that was a lot of fun. Secondly, Arts in the Park going on at Gregory Park this Sunday from 10 to 4. I just got some text messages. Gregory Park is down quite a few big trees. So we'll have some cleanup to do this week to get us back on track, but we'll be in there and we'll be having a great day next Sunday, so come join us. And then lastly, don't know if you saw the news today, but the Fourth of July Parade was announced, and we are going in reverse this year, thanks to the school district and thanks to their tearing up my road that I asked them not to do, but we'll have sour words later on. We are starting at Mickey's. We are traveling right here to this corner here on South Fifth Street. We're going to come to Laurel Street. We're going to take a left. I know that's weird for people. We're going to be turning the opposite direction this year.